Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, December 7th special meeting of the City Council. And we'll open the meeting with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to ask the Mayor to come up and maybe like to make a small presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council members, for affording me a few minutes before we go to tonight's agenda. We received some sad news, quite frankly, I'll say it that way. I think all of you saw in the newspaper or maybe even have heard from her directly, but Deanne Healy, the Executive Director, President of the Peabody Area Chamber of Commerce, got an incredible opportunity to move from her position to join with Salem Five Bank. And I think all of you know how much Deanne has meant to the city of Peabody, to all of our efforts. And I just thought, after talking with President Sasslaw and others, that it'd be a nice opportunity for us to bring her to the council meeting, thank her for all the work, and I do have a plaque that I wanted to present to her. But I did have some remarks I wanted to make. And Deanne has given so much of her time, energy, and talent to Peabody's business community during her 16 years with the Peabody Area Chamber of Commerce. Since I became Mayor, she has been a steadfast partner with my administration in our efforts to revitalize downtown Peabody and foster economic development throughout the city. Deanne's boundless energy and passion for her work are the stuff of legend. She was a tireless champion of all Chamber members, from the most successful established companies to the smallest new mom and pop. We always appreciated the energy and enthusiasm she brought with her to all those groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, breakfasts, after-hour receptions, and so many other Chamber business functions. Certainly, that job is not a nine-to-five job. Deanne's contributions to Peabody Main Streets have been a major part of the vision and imagination which is helping to transform downtown Peabody one property at a time. Although Deanne has moved on from the Chamber, we are very fortunate that she will continue to work in Peabody and continued her valued service to Peabody Main Streets. She has given so much of herself to our city, and we are forever grateful. I consider Deanne a great friend to me, to the city of Peabody, and to all of us who love this city. And I will say, just to add, that she has always done it with, I just feel, incredible grace and dignity. And just a wonderful lady, very talented. And I do have a presentation I wanted to make from the city of Peabody, myself, City Council, all of us. To Deanne Healy, on behalf of the city of Peabody, I am honored to recognize your many years of hard work and dedication to the Peabody Area Chamber of Commerce, Peabody Main Streets, and to so many other community initiatives. We gratefully acknowledge the positive impact your work has had on business and economic development here in Peabody during your 16 years of service to our community. Please accept our sincere gratitude and best wishes for many years of continued health, happiness, and prosperity. Deanne, can you come on up?
I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you over the past 16 years, and it gave me the opportunity to see the inner workings of city government and know that it's not always an easy job, and there's a lot of compromise, and I appreciate everything that you guys do as well. So, thank you.
Also, before we start the regular scheduled meeting, one of our colleagues actually will not be here next week, so I wanted to take the time to recognize Michael Garabedian. Michael has been, has given the city 24 years of public service. He was on the school committee for eight years, and he served as a counselor-at-large for 16 years. And Mike says that's only half his life, so we're going to say it's 48 tonight. But he's not going to be here next week, but we wanted to recognize, and I know some colleagues on the floor who've worked, who've been with Mike might want to say a few words, so at this time, I'd like to give anyone the opportunity who might want to say a few words to Mike. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had the good fortune of meeting Mike. Knew of him, but really got to know him by serving as a counselor with him. Mike, thank you for your guidance and your friendship. Best of luck, Mike.
Council Banning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also had the good fortune of working with Counselor Garabedian for several years on the school committee, and it was always fun to draw the seat next to Mike Garabedian. And I've enjoyed this last year as well, sitting next to Michael. And he, when you agree with him or disagree with him, he was just always the same, right down the middle all the time. He never held a grudge, didn't take anything personally, and I think that all of us can learn from his many years of experience, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Council Gurrell.
Thank you, Council President. I too, well, I had the pleasure of knowing Mike as a kid, so he grew up in the Ward Three area, and I grew up in Ward Two. And we ended up at the park quite a bit, and I would dare say that if you ever saw him as a kid and saw that he was a bodybuilder at the time, nobody ever messed with him. So he was always good to have as a friend, and he was good-looking, too, according to him. I had to throw that one in last night, what can I say? But I too had the opportunity to work with Mike on the school committee and here on the City Council, and it's just been a great pleasure. I'm a little ticked off, he wouldn't give me any of those sign locations for the last election, but you know, sometimes it doesn't work that way. But no, he's a great guy, and he's been a lot of fun to work with, and I couldn't agree more with Council Manning Martin, that he's what I would call the old-school politician who, you know, would argue his point but never take his point personal, and you could walk out of a meeting, even if you disagreed, and still be friends, and that's the way it's been for all these years. So, thank you very much, Mike, for all the service to the community.
And I just want to say, Mike, you know, I've been here a short four years, but you, since I've been on the council, you've always been one easy to pick up the phone, talk to, seek advice, and many times I knew if I wanted to find you, just go down the Big Y about between 9:00 and 9:30, and you'd usually be shopping right around then. But thank you, good luck, and I'd like to give a small gift token of appreciation. I'm going to give you a couple of people, we're going to go down the line here, Council Charis, Mutzulis, and Walsh.
Thank you. Actually, Mike was the very first person I spoke to when I was thinking about running for school committee many, many years ago. I got crushed on that election, but you know, I guess your points were still very good. And not serving on the school committee with you, but I did hear the legendary stories about you on the school committee, you know, for those eight years it was on. It's been a pleasure, you've been very respectful and very kind to me for the past two years. Again, thank you, and I know you have always kind to people because you just want to sell them a car, so.
Council Mutzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, I've known you since we were kids. All I can say is, because everyone's already put the good words in, so I can't really add to that, but I know your family, I know your mother, your father, I knew them all since we were all little kids. I spent a lot of time with your dad, and we had a lot of conversations, I think you know that. And one of them was about you, and I know he's up there looking down on you very proudly, and your brother also, and you're a compliment to your family and into the city of Peabody. You know, it was an honor working with you. Thank you.
Council Walsh.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mike, it's been fun. Michael Garabedian, I think, really is a steady hand, you know. There's some nights here that debates get a little heated, and he's always even-keeled and rational. And funny, but I should have let off, too, Mike, with, you know, I'm the third one here who got to serve with Mike on the school committee, and it was fun returning to the council and seeing some of my colleagues, but especially Mike, because Mike has a tremendous sense of humor. And just, you know, you will be missed on this council. People come and go, but there are certain individuals who have a demeanor that is really appreciated, and you are one of those people, so you know, I would, I would hope that you're not going to be, I hope that you're going to be nearby, but you will be missed here, and again, it was fun serving with you.
And Council Gurrell.
Just one more thing. It reminded me when Ed said Mike Garabedian's stories, and unfortunately, my Christmas party is going to be the same night as the council Christmas party, so I won't be there to share the memorable Mike Garabedian story from the school committee. For those of you who remember, in those days, it could get a little heated, and the meetings could go a little long, particularly some went well into the 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. And we had these meetings in the Higgins Library, the old Higgins Library, where they didn't want to provide us with any heat. I think that was a way to get us out of there one time, but it never worked because we were always there, and it was 1:00, 1:30 in the morning, and we decided we'd be pretty smart, so we went and moved some space heaters out from behind an area and set them up so that we could at least have some heat. And Mike was thinking he was going to get ready to go home, and as he would always do, he'd either sit on the table somewhere, on a corner or an edge. Well, that night, he sat on the space heater, and all of a sudden, his pants were on fire. And we're all looking at the smoke going, what's up with this? Fortunately, fortunately, all, fortunately, it didn't take off, he was able to put it out right away, but it was, was a pretty interesting evening. We were thinking, what do we do? Call the fire department and say, Mike, Mike Garabedian's pants are on fire? But my most, my most memorable story of you on the school committee, Mike, thank you.
Council Garabedian, would you like to say a few words?
Well, you know, it's, you know, obviously, you guys will come a time when it's time to move on, and I felt that this was time, even though if I knew you guys liked me this much, I probably would have ran again. But it was time to move on, I didn't have the high energies you guys and can't put the time in like you did, so I thought it was time. But it's been an honor to serve this great city of Peabody for 24 years, and it's kind of a goal that I fulfilled, and I'm glad I did it, and I have not regretted one single day of answering to the people of Peabody. You guys, when we talk about debates and, you know, something getting heated, and especially when we were on the school committee, you know, a wise, wise man said to me, and you guys probably all remember, Buddy Roach, is he told me, before I even entered the first meeting, he said, "Look, there's going to be tough debates, you're going to get into arguments," you know, "but you can't take it personal, and you need to walk out of there a gentleman and forget about what happened in the chambers, and because you're all fighting for the same goal, and that's the people of Peabody." And I think I kept that going for the 24 years, and again, I'm going to miss everybody, but I've enjoyed everything, and I appreciate this. It's been, it's been a great 24 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, just to get some housekeeping underway, this meeting is being televised live on cable Channel Nine, being taped by our Peabody Access TV, and also being recorded by our City Council sonographer. Item A, tax classification hearing, just to adopt the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real estate and personal property for fiscal year 2018. Mr. Mc, two? Yes, and the City Cork will read the notice.
Notice is here by giving that the City Council, the city of Peabody, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 7, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wiggins Auditorium, City Hall 24th Lot, Peabody Mass, in accordance with Chapter 7997 of the Acts of 1979, as amended of the Massachusetts general laws, in order to adopt the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2018. Peabody City Council Counselor Joel D. Sasslaw, City Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here tonight to discuss the state of our city's finances and to propose our 2018 tax rate classification. This is a very challenging time of year for our financial team, and I want to thank Mike Gingras, Mary Martin, Sue Antonellis, and their office staff for their hard and thorough work in preparing for tonight's presentation. Mike Gingras will provide a more detailed presentation to you shortly, however, I did want to give a brief overview. Tonight, I'm very happy to report that our city's financial condition remains very strong. You may recall this past June, at our budget presentation, we projected a $157 tax increase, or increase to our average residential tax bill. This projection was based on significant increases to our city's pension and retirement obligations to the tune of $346,000, a $3.1 million to fund our contract settlements, which included a large investment in increased staffing for our fire department, and $505,000 for the additional Peabody students attending the Essex Tech Regional Voc. We together, the City Council, and my administration have formed a very productive partnership and have undertaken a number of very noteworthy projects to improve our city and make Peabody a more desirable place to live, work, and raise a family. Together, we have invested in education. Our new state-of-the-art Higgins Middle School opened in September of 2016 and is considered a model for all other cities and towns to follow. In fact, we just hosted a seminar that the MSBA reached out to us to invite cities and towns that are actually in the process of looking to build new schools. We hosted them here in Peabody to show how successful our project was, and it was a wonderful event a couple of years ago, or a couple of weeks ago, that I felt really distinguished Peabody and showed that we do things right. It was a major investment, the biggest investment in our city history, and it worked wonderfully. Hundreds of our students are receiving a top-rate vocational training at our new regional vocational school. The McCarthy Elementary School underwent a major renovation, which completed earlier this year with a new roof and windows, which will result in significant savings in energy costs. This summer, Peabody High School underwent a number of major improvements, including a new roof and renovations to the high school auditorium and gymnasium. And if you haven't seen the auditorium or the gymnasium, please check it out, it's amazing how it looks now. Our investment in education has helped provide our students with the very latest in 21st century learning technology. This year, every student from 6th grade to 10th grade is equipped with a Chromebook, and every 4th and 5th grade classroom is equipped with a Chromebook cart. Next year, we will have grades 6 to 11, the following year, 6 to 12, which is a remarkable achievement, and I would put our technology against any city and town. And I want to thank the school committee for all of their work to make this happen. Together, we have invested in public safety. I could talk about a number of items, I just will mention briefly. In this past year's budget, we added additional firefighters to the ranks to ensure that each of our fire stations have a minimum of three firefighters at all times, including a ranking firefighter. That was a big investment for us, but I think it was the right investment for the safety of our residents and for the safety of those firefighters. Together, we have invested to improve the quality of life for Peabody residents. The second Mass Works Downtown project was completed earlier this year and has made Peabody Square, no doubt, safer for pedestrians and drivers alike. Most importantly, our square has undergone a much-needed facelift, improving our appearance and making the entire area more attractive to developers. The council's support of both Mass Works project was crucial to their successes, and we all deserve great credit for this. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but we have three new restaurants that have signed deals to come to Peabody Square, and that is without question as a result of some of the work that we've done downtown. And the Scouting Way retention basin, for a fourth year, is working properly and holding back millions of gallons of water that previously flowed to our downtown. Thanks to your support, the long-awaited Crystal Lake restoration and beautification project is nearing completion. Nearly 50,000 cubic yards of sediment was removed from the lake basin this spring, or this summer and fall, to restore the water to its natural state, and exciting new amenities will be added to the area this spring, making it an inviting place for Peabody families. And that is just a few of the highlights of the many projects we have undertaken together. I'm pleased to report that we have met those June projections and, in some cases, slightly exceeded them, whereby I'm thrilled to announce that we have been able to lower the average tax increase from the June projection of $157 to the actual number of $141. So where are we? I will highlight a couple of important topics. For the fourth year in a row, our average residential home value has increased. In June, we projected a 5% increase in home values. The good news is the actual increase is 5.9%. To give some history, in 2015, we went up 5.5%, in 2016, 6.7%, in 2017, 5.3%. So in 2014, the average residential value was $287,700, and now, in the past four years, has climbed over 25% to $361,300. In our early projections for next fiscal year, I think the numbers are going to be very similar to the last four years. Now, certainly some, certainly some of that, and I always like to say this, can be attributed to improved conditions in the economy as a whole, but make no mistake, our investments in Peabody's future, together with our ongoing commitment to make Peabody an affordable and desirable place to live, has helped our city become one of the hottest real estate markets in Massachusetts, and that's backed up by all the real estate brokers in the area. To illustrate our June projections, to illustrate, our June projections included a $721,000 increase in new growth tax revenue. But our new growth, particularly in the commercial sector, was better than expected and provided new revenue totaling $1,390,000, almost $320,000, or 44% above projections. Tonight, I propose an increase in our CIP factor from 168 to 171 to create a more balanced tax bill and reduce some of the burden on our residential homeowners. To further reduce the burden on our homeowners, I'm calling for a nearly $2.1 million draw from our reserves. You'll recall in 2015, we took out $1 million from reserves. In 2016, we bumped it up to $2.6 million. Last year, we took out $2.1 million. I believe that, again, $2.1 million is the appropriate number this year, and here is why. Certainly, a couple of factors that we have coming into play this coming year. One is the result of the fire at Coolidge Water Treatment Plant. We're expecting to get our assessment from the MWRA, the Mass Water Resource Authority, sometime in the spring, and I anticipate that that number is going to be in $1 to $2 million range. That will be above what the insurance will cover for us. So that's certainly going to be a big hit. We'll be coming to you at a later date with some options as to how to handle that, but that is a big number that we're going to have to plan for. The good news is the Coolidge Water Treatment Plant renovations are underway, they've been in full swing now for a number of weeks, and we're looking at February or March to be on board and have the water, have the water treatment plant taking care of our own water needs and reducing the reliance on MWRA water, which we have been for the last, since the fire in March. The other issue that we're planning for is just the typical budget items. We've been told to anticipate a 10% increase in health insurance, which is certainly a big number. We're hoping for the best there, but certainly, that's something we have to prepare for. 10% increase would be approximately $2 million. We were notified by PERAC, the State Retirement Board, that we will be assessed $350,000 increase in our retirement obligation. Those are nondiscretionary items that we will just receive a bill and have to pay. Negotiations are underway in the next round of contracts. Our 13 city unions, all of the contracts expire June 30 of 2018. So we've already started with a number of the unions' contract negotiations, and I expect that they will be, be quite a busy year, working with the 13 city unions to settle those contracts. For these reasons, the MWRA obligation and just concern about some upcoming bills for the 2019 budget, I anticipate a significant commitment to the reserve account to fund that FY19 budget. With our investment in quality of life and the continued delivery of core municipal services that residents have come to expect, we are still among the very lowest residential tax bills in Essex County, as the paper, as the chart will show you that you'll see shortly. In fact, we have the lowest tax bill of any city in Essex County. As you can see, compared to our neighboring communities, Salem, we are $1,200 less, Danvers, $1,500 less, Beverly, $2,000 less, Middleton, $3,000, Linfield, $4,000, and I could go on and on, and that gap is only increasing. I think many of you saw in the Salem News the last couple of weeks, as all the cities and towns locally are doing exactly what we're doing tonight. Danvers announced a $244 tax increase, Beverly announced a $247 tax increase, and just yesterday in the newspaper, Salem was announced a $259 tax increase. The city of Peabody is at 141. And I'll put our, excuse me, I'll put our municipal services up against those communities any day. I feel we simply offer taxpayers a better value for their tax dollars here in Peabody. In closing, I want to thank the City Council for being outstanding partners with my administration. No one wants to pay higher taxes, and voting for an increase is never easy, but I truly believe that we are investing appropriately and conscientiously in Peabody's future. Our investments in education, public safety, and quality of life continue to pay dividends, and we've done it without compromising the affordability that has long been Peabody's calling card. Together, we have Peabody moving forward in the right direction, and I ask for your support on tonight's votes. Thank you.
This first slide goes over the total property valuation this year. The residential, as the mayor alluded to, increased from 5.5 to 5.8 million, or 5.9%. The commercial, industrial, and personal increased 1.63%, and the overall increase of $349 million is 5%. If you look at the two pie charts, you'll notice that the green portion is starting to creep from one year to the next. There's more residential value as a percent of the total this year, it's 0.7% increase, but over the past several years, that's creeped up a couple of percent. The next slide shows our valuation history. And as the mayor alluded to earlier, it's beginning from FY14 forward, we've seen increases of 4.8%, 5.4%, 4.3%, for a total of 21% increase in value. The green line represents the residential values increasing steadily since 2015, average increase of $295 million per year. CIP levels are the lines below that, they've remained relatively flat, but still averaging $16.5 million over the last three years, positive increases. The next slide analyzes a breakout of the residential values. We have single-family homes that have increased $251 million, or 6.4%. Condominiums increased $37.9 million, at 6.9%. Two-in-three-family homes have increased $23.7 million, at 5.9%. Multifamilies have increased 2.1%. We have a reduction in vacant land, and that's primarily due to land being purchased and moved onto the tax rolls, not purchased, but developed. And in 2016, 25 single-family homes were added to the tax rolls. Overall, single-family values represent 71.5% of the total residential value, condominiums 10%. Condominiums, 10%. Two- and three families, 7.3%. Multifamilies, 9.5%. And vacant land and other, 1.7%. Again, it's a steady increase of 5% per year since 2014. This next slide shows the analysis of the CIP values. This year, they've increased 24.7 million or 1.63%. And the commercial side, the largest change is in the hotels and warehouse area. In the personal property, the biggest increases there are new machinery, equipment, fixtures. And again, the average increase over those three years is 16.5 million. This next slide shows the residential values. The mayor talked about this earlier. Since 2014, where we were at average residential value of 287.7, moving to today at 361.3, that's $73,600 more in average value, or over 25% increase over the past four years. Again, steadily increasing, and we anticipate at least another 5% come January. This next slide shows the average CIP values to kind of give you a sense of what the growth there is. From 2017 to 2018, the values, average values increased 18,800. There's modest but steady increases. In the previous year, it was only 3,000. The year before that was 20,000. The year before that, 40,000. We'll still be positive on the commercial side. This chart is our new growth chart. Since 2010, we've averaged over $1 million in growth during this period. In 2018, we've gained 22.7 million in residential value through new development and 31.7 million in commercial value through new development. Taxes relating to that are 267,000 for the residential, 771,000 in new taxes added to the tax rolls for commercial. So ongoing development investments in Peabody, as the mayor alluded to, continue to help us add new taxes to the tax rolls each year. This slide is showing us our budget data. The FY18 budget increased 4.5 million, plus 500,000 at the folk tech. State and county assessments increased 117,000, and we reduced our allowance for abatements 700,000 for a $4.4 million increase over FY17 or 2.75% increase. So how do we fund this? We're funding it through $2.3 million of property tax, 1.5 millions of local receipts, increase in state aid of a half a million, and a slight increase in available resources or local revenues. The thing to note here is last year, the tax levy was an increase of 2.8 million. We were able to reduce that to 2.3 million because we're able to use more in local receipts this year. This slide looks at our local receipts. This has increased from when we came here in June. I projected $665,000 less, but when the actual revenues came in, motor vehicle came in a little better, landfill was better, and our permits were better. So I was able to increase those as a projection for the FY18 budget. The motor vehicle looks a little bit softer than last year, so I didn't go to the full amount, but I anticipate we're still going to be getting a pretty good increase. From our prior few years, we were getting about 7.3 million. The next slide shows our revenue from state aid. That increased to half a million. And thank you, Councilor Wass. Education aid increased 200,000. General government local aid increased 270,000, and veterans benefits increased 46,000. That's the makeup of that half a million dollars. This slide shows the CIP classification factor of 1.71 and how we are shifting the taxes to commercial. The column on the left shows the full FY18 values of 5.8 billion for residential and 1.5 billion for commercial. That represents 79% for residential and 20% for commercial. If we taxed at an equalized rate, 82 million would be residential and 21.7 million would be commercial. With the recommended factor of 171, we would be reducing taxes to the residents to 67 million and increasing the taxes to the commercial to 37.1 million, or a shift of 15.4 million from one class to the other. If you look below, the equalized rate for residential would have been, averaged annual tax bill would have been $5,094. With classification, that would reduce it to $4,140, giving the residents the savings of $954. On the other hand, classified rate increases the average tax to CIP by 14,400. The percentage of the total levy shift is consistent with the past, and this year it's This next slide just shows us the history of the tax rates. You can see that in 2014, the residential rate was $12.40 and has continued to go down, $12.30, $11.92, $11.76, $11.46. They continue to go down as values go up. It shows that the city has kept a stabilized tax rate for a number of years. The next slide shows the homeowners' annual tax bills since 2013. This year, we're proposing the increase at $141.15. That's a 3.53% increase. Last year, the increase was 3.55%, very consistent and similar. The range over these past years has been 2.72% to 4.61% or its average 3.8%. Trying to remain consistent so that citizens and also commercial know what to expect. Next slide again shows the commercial average annual tax bills. They've increased $202, going from 34,649 to 34,851. Again, stable but moderate increases over the past few years. This next slide breaks out the effects of this tax classification. 49.61, 50% of households will see a $100 or less tax increase. That represents 7,543 homes. Last year, there was 7,324 homes. So we've increased that amount. On the commercial side, 84% of the commercial customers will pay less tax than they did This slide is the comparison of Essex County. Peabody still remains at the bottom of the list with Salisbury being right below us. And this year, we anticipate, again, one of the lowest tax bills in the county, approximately $2,800 less than the $7,000 average. And the mayor talked about this earlier, compared to the other communities, we're trying to keep it as low as possible. So in summary, the assessed values climbed to 7.3 billion. Our allowable levy under the Proposition 2.5 would be $114 million, but we're only going to ask for $104 million. So that would create a levy reserve of $10,438,000. This is the amount of tax that we would not, the amount of money that we will not tax residents this year. And over the past 30 years, that number is over $200 million that we haven't taxed So the classification factor is 171, residential tax rate of $11.46, and the commercial CIP
Thank you, Mike. At this point, I'd like to open up the council for any questions, comments, or Councilor Turco.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just have a quick question. You had mentioned 2.1 million from reserves, and then you mentioned the water treatment plant. So this is 2.1 million from reserves, and then there'll be an additional 1 to 2 million later on coming out of reserves on top of that.
So 2.1 that I'm asking to be taken out now to address this budget, it's hard to say based on kind of the, some of the, you know, the, MWRA will not give us, they'll give us some estimates, but they're not going to give us a final number. Based on their projections and what our numbers are showing, we're looking at probably $1 to $2 million. We're going to have a couple of different options that, as to how we want to treat it. We could just roll it into next year's budget, or we could potentially take some out of reserves at that time. So that would be, this will be, 2.1 will be separate. When we get to that in the spring, we'll have some recommendations or present some options to you as to that, how to handle that MWRA gap.
Thank you. So I know we had some other potential things that we may have did to go to reserves too also. Is, I mean, are we in danger of affecting the bond rating with our reserves, what's left in reserves or?
I don't believe so. I think right now, if we were to take out the 2.1 that I'm requesting today, we're going to be at about $15.1 million. That includes the 3.6 or so in stabilization, 15.1. Let me double check that, Council. So we're very close to the ideal, which is 10% of the budget, which is, I know, is our policy that we strive towards. We've been lower than that in the past, and our bond rating has been upheld. So I feel good about where we stand right now, but I think next year, we'll be challenged with the MWRA bill that's going to come our way and some of the other challenges. But let me just confirm that number.
So after these votes, we will have 14.4 in free cash, 3.6 in stabilization, and, no, actually, 12.8 in free cash and 3.6 in stabilization, 16.5 in total, plus some unreserved CIP. We'll have 10%, 17 million in total.
Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And with this as a public hearing, I just, for the record, anybody from the public like to come up and speak in favor of the budget proposed tax increase, tax classification hearing? Anybody like to speak in favor of the 2018 tax rate classification hearing? Anybody in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition to the 2018 tax rate classification hearing? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Turn it back over to the council. Councilor Gervell.
Yeah, Mike, I'm just a little confused on the, on the status of the reserve post because we had started the year, I think last year, we were at running about 17. Does that mean there's a surplus flowing through some reason this year? Because, I mean...
What happened during last year, we were certified at 14.1. We had used down to 11.5, and we built it back up to 15.1.
Yeah, well, that's my question. How did we build it back? How does it build back up? Is that a surplus of budget against use?
There's a couple of factors. One was we didn't use all of the budget. We had 600,000 of overlay that we didn't use. We used some of it to cover snow and ice, but the rest of it rolled to free cash. And we exceeded some estimated receipts, motor vehicle and a few others, so that built it back. And landfill, landfill in particular.
No, I mean, that's, that's great news because I know every other year, I've had to argue to use the reserve to help stabilize the rates, particularly for the residentials. And I'm not a big fan of, you know, overburdening the commercials either because we have a pretty good shift. So the great news is that we didn't have to burn down more to keep that increase lower. And, but, so, I mean, well, that would explain it. I mean, it would have to be, so, so literally, the differential after using the 2.6 is all unexpected receipts, really, and less use.
Both, right. We weren't able to budget for the landfill because we hadn't had that in the previous year. So that landfill revenue came in 600,000 plus. We're probably going to ask to appropriate that back for the project at some point because it could be a part of free cash, but that helped build it.
Yeah, because I know it's, you know, again, I, everybody has their different perspective on what a reserve is for, and I, and I certainly believe that the reserve sort of represents a couple of things, not only for catastrophes like we had and to help, hopefully to help offset the increased tax burden from the MWRA. But having this level of reserve is clearly, it's got to be plenty of safety stock for the bond rating because we're so far below our levy limit, and we've got plenty of buffer for...
And I have to argue that every time I talk to them.
Right, and we have plenty of buffer for emergency. And I think the only thing that's, you know, that, the only sad news, it seems like in the story that we've read on the screen, is that the, the commercial values didn't rise as significantly as one would hope because you'd want to, commercial values are based on occupancies and all sorts of factors, and you would hope that as we improve the downtown and particularly in the park at the occupancy level, you're driving that up just by having occupants. So...
And the assessors are saying that that should increase for the January valuation about 3% or more.
Yeah, so I would think that would be the good news in the story. If that was the case, then those values will rise like the property values would rise, and then you could adjust a factor next year to lower the... and then you could adjust a factor next year to lower the burden.
Maybe, right.
Because you'd be spreading amongst more. So, I mean, overall, you know, nobody likes a tax increase, but ultimately, if all this comes true, that's probably the, since I've been on the council, probably one of the most modest increases that I've seen, and with a reserve. So, in the past, I would have fought for more reserve. I think 2.6 is the right amount. I think saving the million or the million and a half that we're going to need for the MWRA tax increase is a good, is a good thought. And I also think that there are a lot of infrastructure needs that are going to occur that only, will only be able to bond partially for, or that we'll have to pay for out of the reserves, in particular, water projects in West Peabody. So, you know, it's, it's good. It's nice to be in good financial shape. Thank you.
Council Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, and as all the councils know, that when we go through the budget, when we increase the budget, when we go through that whole process, when you increase the budget, you know when tonight, you know you're increasing taxes back then. So, we're not increasing taxes tonight. We already did that back when we approved the budget. So, tonight is really all about the CIP factor, and the mayor's recommending it go from 171 to 168 because now it's time to figure out how you're going to pay for your budget and where the taxpayers' money is going to come from, and how much from whom, which was the presentation that we had this evening. So, I do have a question regarding the overage that went into free cash. Mr. Gingrich, was any of that monies from positions that we budgeted for when we formulated the budget? Because I recall that we had a lot of unfilled positions that I questioned. Had we filled them, or did they go unfilled throughout the year, and then therefore that monies has now gone into free cash?
There may have been a few in the FY '17 budget, but for, at the end of the FY '17 budget, I believe there was 468,000 of appropriations that were not spent.
And those were on positions that were not filled?
No, that's, that's overall, the whole budget, and it's predominantly expense.
Okay, and what expense?
Well, the total budget of approximately 160 million, at the end of the day, we didn't spend 468,000.
Yeah, so I'm...
And I don't have that breakout with me.
You don't know what we did not, you don't know what we budgeted it for, but we did not spend it on?
I don't...
And it's an overage that automatically goes into free cash, so...
I don't have that breakout with me.
Okay, well, I think that when we go into the budget for next year, we should know these things so that we don't budget for things and ask the taxpayers for that money upfront, and then not return it to them, and automatically it goes into free cash in order to build up our reserves. So, I think that's an important piece of information to have. So I would like that, if you could get that to us at some point, I would appreciate that.
I just had a question we got on the landfill revenues. So, was the increase, I know that we had talked about when we opened landfill, the company was not getting enough of materials out of their precious metals. Was that an increase, or was there, I know, was it a tipping fee? Can you just explain that? And is this the, is it, do we expect this to maintain consistency at the numbers that you have on this year's budget?
No. This is predominantly from the Crystal Lake project, and you'll see a like number for this fiscal year.
Okay, and can we talk about, so, so now we have to break it out a little bit, can we talk a little bit of all as far as the company that's up there and that was using the new process to, you know, find some monies by, you know, drying it and taping precious metals? How is that going?
We've gotten a little bit more, and they've started to ramp up the process a little bit. We were getting checks like 2,000 every month or so, and that's increased some, but I'm not sure where they stand.
Any other councils at all? Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to expand on your question. So if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mike, the $650,000 revenue for landfill will go away next year when the Crystal Lake project is done. And then we're going to take that 650,000, and we're going to put it toward the cost of the project, so it's really not additional revenue.
Run into reserves, and we're probably coming back to move some of that.
If I could, those are good questions. If I could just go back to the Covanta question first, there has been slight increases in what we've been getting over the last couple of years. There have been some exchanges kind of in lieu because of the work we're doing at the landfill. Covanta is allowing us to use some equipment and some other things to do some of the work to try to save costs that potentially we would have to hire out for. So there has been some kind of reciprocation in kind gifts. As to the money that's coming in now for the landfill, we have about another 5,000 cubic yards of fill that we still have, that we need to be brought in to cover the sediment from the Crystal Lake project. We will then have to make a decision as a city whether we just shut down the operation, again, the landfill operation, or if we want to continue the landfill operation and continue to bring in more fill from outside. There's certainly revenue to be made. You know, we're going to, as you can see, $600,000, and we're not even really advertising. We've just been going with a couple of companies to provide us with the fill necessary, again, as kind of top cover for the dredged material. But we'll have to make a decision as to if we want to continue the landfill operation or even expand it. We do, we were allowed by the DEP to open up the landfill to take this, take this material in. We'd have to petition them and put forward an application, but things have gone very well there. As to the money, we'll probably make some recommendations once we kind of get the final bills on the, on the Crystal Lake project. And I imagine that a large portion of that 600 will be asking, if not all of it, will be asking to, to put towards the Crystal Lake to close out that project. I think that'll probably be done because we're looking at doing the additional work in the spring, you know, kind of the amenities, the docks and the beautification of the area, probably March, April.
Thank you very much.
Thompson McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we're on the local revenue sheet, Mr. Gingrich...
Sure.
Just a couple of observations from June. I think you were, you had upped the recreational revenue by 150,000 at that time, and it looks like you backed it off. And I believe the rationale at the time was you were expecting some revenues from Tilly's. But that, I, refresh my memory on that. Was that just kind of a placeholder because you weren't sure what to expect, or...
Yeah. I went through and I tweaked a number of these line items, and initially I thought, well, it might make sense to offset some of the Tilly's. But right now, with their initial first year, I wanted to leave that aside for now.
The other one I noticed was billboard revenue, which I thought was going to be as solid at, at 500, but it's in here at 4, so is it something changed there?
Um, yeah, in fact, we, the way it's billed, there's one that gets billed quarterly, so a piece of it drops out of this fiscal year and was in the prior fiscal year. So, it's right at the 400,000 range.
So going forward, is that...
Going forward, that's the number.
Shouldn't it, it's 400?
Yeah.
Okay.
425, maybe.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Gervell.
Yeah, I was just, so I was just going into the change of position on, on the local revenues, and it's too bad Mike Garabedian is leaving because, but I can see why now because for motor vehicle excise taxes to go up 880,000 means he sold, you know, quite a few new vehicles for that type of increase. It's just amazing to me that that would jump that high.
In one year, yeah.
In one year. That's, that's like so abnormal compared to the trend on every other year. You know, a couple hundred thousand here and there. And the water user charges, is that like, what is that? Is that the, is that the water and sewer tax?
The water sewer tax and the, and the liens.
And liens.
So, I increased those based on what rate increases.
Oh, okay, so, so that's, that's using the projected rate increase that we put in place. Okay, thank you.
Have a motion, Thompson McGinn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming back to me. Yeah, the other one that seemed to jump significantly from June was the hotel taxes. And is that a just better occupancy than they were anticipating? Businesses up, or is that...
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's the case. I think in total, it's about 80,000.
Yeah, I was, I mean, the number I, okay, you're saying it's up 80,000 from June?
Between the hotel and meals, one was up, one was down, from my projections.
Maybe I misread it. I thought the June number was like 1.15 million.
No.
I'm going to double check that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Just, Mike, just following up on that, just curious. So we, why would the, the hotel, the meals, I see we went up, but the hotel, you know, a lot of people say it would go up because of the US Open and things of that. Is there any reason why actually for 2017, it went down significantly from 2016, and now we're going to kind of, you have it pretty much flatlining for 2018? Any, anything behind that?
No, I don't really know. I just, you know, we, we just, we end up getting that money from the state, and they just turn it over to us.
Any other councils? Have a motion?
Move, Council Public.
Thank you for the motion. On favor? Any appeals to vote? Council Gervell.
Uh, there's a series of motions to be made. The first one is to vote to adopt Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, optional additional real estate exemptions for 2018. So moved.
Heard the motion? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Petzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
The, the following votes are required to, for the DOR tax rate approval. There's a vote to approve the following transfers to offset the fiscal 2018 tax rate. A transfer of 1,600,000 from unreserved fund balance to reduce the fiscal 2018 tax levy. A transfer of 400,000 from the CIP unrestricted to reduce the fiscal 2018 tax levy, and a transfer of 73,200 from parking meter revenue to fund the 2018 parking meter budget. So moved.
Heard the motion?
Point of order. Council Gervell, are you on C? What, what are you reading right now? Or you're reading a prepared statement, but what does it refer to? Is that, are you on C?
C, D, and E.
Okay, thank you.
C, C, D, and E. Any discussion on the motion?
If you could, that'll be easier to follow.
So, so the first one would be a motion to approve the transfer of funds from the 1,600,000 to the FY 2018 operating budget tax levy, and that would be from the unreserved fund balance.
Heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Petzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
The next would be to transfer 73,200 from parking meter revenue to fund 2018 parking meter budget. So moved.
Heard the motion? Any discussion? Okay, we're all set. Any discussion on the motion? This is parking meter correct, two, this would be E on your agenda, yes. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Petzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
The next items pertain to the CPC votes, and this would be, for those following the agenda versus this boat sheet, it's F, we're going to be dealing with F and G, so, and H, and I. So we'll take them one at a time. And, Mike, do you want to explain this, just so that people are clear on what they're doing?
Sure. It's part of the tax rate setting process. The community preservation area has a whole format in it. And these are annual votes that are made to reserve 10% of unreserved funds to the different accounts. The first vote's $10,000 is for administrative expenses. The next vote of 300,000 is to split 10% to open space, community housing, and historic preservation. And then another vote for 150,000 takes 10% to open space and 2.5% to those other two accounts.
And it just basically sets the balances to the right level.
Right.
So that they're, they're in compliance with the CPC.
And so they're there for use during the year.
Anybody have any questions on that? I just didn't want anybody to be voting on things they didn't quite get, so. The first vote would be a transfer of $10,000 from CPC unreserved to CPC administration to fund the FY 2018 administrative expense. So moved.
Heard the motion? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Petzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Next one would be to transfer 300,588 from CPC unreserved to CPC historic preservation in the amount of 100,196. Community housing reserve in the amount of 100,196. And open space reserve in the amount of 100,196 for a statutory 10% reservation of CPC funds. So moved.
Heard the motion? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilors Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
to CPC open space in the amount of one hundred thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Historic preservation, twenty-five thousand forty-nine dollars, and community housing, twenty-five thousand forty-nine dollars, which is an additional ten percent reserve for open space and a two-point-five percent for historical preservation and community housing. So moved.
Heard the motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould? McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Watzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to no-
Next vote would be to transfer two hundred and forty thousand dollars from CPC unreserved, CPC Crystal Lake, in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and PBMHS Athletic Complex in the amount of eighty thousand dollars, making funds available to be taken in as local receipt. So moved.
Heard the motion. Any discussion? Counselor Manning, Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the eighty thousand for the PBMHS High School Football Field Replacement Project, I recog- I know we're rolling these all in, and I recognize the Crystal Lake was a multi-year payment. Could you refresh my memory on the Football Field Replacement Project, if that was a multi-year pla- payment as well? That was a, it's for eighty thousand, but it was a four hundred thousand dollar project? Is that, is that what this?
What the CPC did was, they, over five years, gave these amounts of money to reduce, to offset the debt service that we took out to pay for those projects.
Okay. Was it eighty thousand dollars a year for five years on just the football field?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Watzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
The next, it's not on my vote sheet, but the, uh, I on the transfer of funds, can, can, somebody explain that one?
This, this is to be received. This is, um, proposed transfer for the Brody's Building.
Motion to receive item I, Transfer of Funds CPC Community Preservation Act, Ten Lowell Street, the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for CPC acquisition of Ten Lowell Street, the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Refer to the next Finance Committee meeting. So moved.
Heard the motion? Yes, Counselor Manning, Martin?
Thank you. And, um, the receipt reserved for this, um, reserved from the sale of real estate for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I know you had mentioned some sale of land up here, but will we be getting more information on both these items, for the purchase of Ten Lowell Street, and also I'd like to know what land we did sell, uh, for, to receive two hundred and fifty thousand? Are we, we gonna get that information? Uh, we have a, this request for this, these monies is coming to us tonight, and I recognize that we're forwarding that to the next Finance Committee meeting, but there's no other additional information to support the request. It's just a request to transfer the funds to buy, um, Ten Lowell Street, or what we're calling, I guess, the Brody's Building. There's no other information here. It's just a request to transfer money. So, I'd prefer that we don't refer this to Subcommittee until we have more information to go together. Um, it's, it's strange to me that we don't have any other information. We just have a request to transfer money.
To me, uh, part of the, uh, the request to get it to Finance is so that it can be reviewed and we can get the proper information. So, all this is, to me, is more procedural than anything. Um, it allows it to get it on the next agenda in the Finance Committee meeting.
I understand that. I, procedurally, for me, I like to see what we're being asked to pay for. And what, I mean, has a city engineer, um, done any studies to tell us that this is a, uh, is it for flood mitigation? Is it for open space? Is it for a future, um, garage? Does the land, uh, a parking garage, or is the land available, uh, to be built upon? Will we be getting, uh, any revenue from this purchase, future revenue from this purchase in the, in the future? I'd like to have all of that with the request for the money. I don't want to have someone, to have a request for four hundred and fifty or four hundred and thirty thousand dollars come up separate from all that information. That, to me, is kinda, you know what, backwards.
Well, I, I just would have to say, I beg to differ, because this is no different form of request than procedurally every other request we get to the Subcommittee on Finance, where at the time of the Subcommittee, the justification for the request is presented, and if we then don't accept the justification, it's basically, uh, not, not, not moved on. So, this is, you know, the agenda item is listed in the packet. The typical cover letter is coming with it. So, I, I just, I, I guess we can agree to disagree on this one. I, I just don't think it was procedurally any different than what we've done in the past.
If I may, I, I think, um, you make a good point, then, if that is accurate, that moving forward, then, I think that we should request this information in advance of, or at least with the request for the money. And I'll be making that, um, motion every time we move forward, because if we've been doing it that way, my, um, I'll have to disagree with you that I think that we shouldn't be doing it that way, and we should not have done it that way, and in moving forward, we should not do it that way. So, thank you. I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
And that's fine. I, I, you know, everybody has a right not to support anything they want, but, uh, from my perspective, the purpose of the Finance Committee is to understand and be given information, which comes in our Finance Packet when we have the Subcommittee meeting, and that, to me, is where the information belongs, whether it comes with the request or whether it comes at the time of the meeting, as long as it's available there and the people are available there, I believe that that's justifiable. So, um, again, we can, we can vote on this, and by roll call, you can make your motion, and I, I would tend not to agree with what you just said.
Counselor Gavell, just a quick question. So, is, is, uh, would this be proposed to have the Subcommittee Finance before the next scheduled meeting? Is that, is that the, uh, the goal here? We have one meeting left. I'm just, I was just gonna roll into next year.
As far as, whenever the next Finance Committee is, is, is scheduled, I don't know if we had one scheduled for the fourteenth, but it should follow the same course of order that we followed, you know, ever since I've been here, is, is basically, we got a Finance Committee Packet, and all the information is given to us at the time, and we, when it's scheduled. And it has to be there a week in advance, so you have plenty of time to review it. So, um, I, I, I'd be happy if, you know, the fourteenth, we have a Finance Committee meeting. I don't mind having one, um, but if it has to roll into next year, then it'll roll into next year.
And I was just asking for, in, in, point of information for my colleagues and myself. Uh, Counselor Manning, Martin?
Well, I, I just feel that- Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, that, we've read about this project and this idea in the paper over a month ago, so there's got to be more information there that I'd like to have it now. Um, it has to exist, I would hope, especially if we're, we're gonna be talking about purchasing land, and, um, we have, we're moving forward with, I think, flood mitigation. I'm reading things in the paper before the request for appropriation even be, comes before us, and now I'm even being told I need to wait until we have a Subcommittee, a Subcommittee meeting on it. It's just, this is just getting more curious and more curious to me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, and I'll be brief, and, uh, there's been some good points made. Uh, I've just always, this is how we've done it in the past. Uh, this is how we did it, uh, when we purchased the first half of the building, um, at the Codair property, which I think was, I think Counsel Sinewitz was the only one that voted against that project, um, or that request. But we have assessors' records that we'll be presenting. We'll have registry of deeds records. Uh, the property right now is, is up for sale, right now, on, through a broker, uh, for five hundred and fifty-five thousand, I believe. Uh, that's public record. Uh, so we will have some information provided. Um, my request, and just to give you a little preview of what I'm gonna be asking for, and hopefully it could be on the fourteenth, to just move forward, 'cause I am afraid of them selling the property. They wanna move forward with the sale. I'm hoping to, to not have that go forward and to be able to purchase it for the city. And all I'd like to do is have that property, uh, taken down. Um, I believe there's a great benefit, uh, from a beautification point of view, but also from a flood mitigation point of view. To me, that's one of ground zero, ground zero areas for flood, for flooding in the city, when we've had it in years past, and, um, I think this would be a great open space area. And to continue what we did, uh, three years ago, when we purchased the one half, which was the former Codair property. Um, we have some open space there. There's some hopes that we can maybe have a George PBD statue and, and make that a real beautiful area downtown. Certainly not any sort of project that we'd be looking to build there, parking garage, anything of that nature. All we're gonna be looking to do is have that property demolished and create open space, uh, which I think would be of great benefit to the downtown.
Counselor Manning, Martin?
Yes, and, uh, I do recall that Counsel Sinewitz was the only Counselor that did not support it. I did support it, but my recol- my recollection is that it was presented, um, as an idea, um, an investment that was affiliated with the hotel boutique and a parking garage. So, it has been some time. It's been three to four years, as you say, so the request now has changed, and it's an open, uh, space flood mitigation, as I've read in the paper, in that you've just, um, shared now a flood mitigation project to include a, um, monument and a park. So, it, it's changed since that vote that Counsel Sinewitz did vote against, and that I did support, and the rest of the Council did support. Again, um, it, my recollection is it was connected to the hotel and a, um, hope for a parking garage. So, that's my recollection, and I hope to get the information well in advance so that I can make an informed decision. Thank you.
If I could, 'cause Counsel, you're exactly right. When, when I did present, that was a part of it. I apologize for not mentioning that earlier, because at the time, we were looking to see if a parking garage was a possibility at the Foster Street Lot, and in order to maybe have some construction there, we needed to find what's called compensatory flood storage. And that's when we looked at that site. Um, you know, that, that's really not being pursued right now, a parking garage, although maybe in future years, there'll be a need for it, um, and that could be a possible location. Uh, there's no plans to build at that site, um, but you are absolutely right. That was a piece of this to maybe provide options for us if we ever did wanna develop that site in the future with a parking garage or even a small commercial project, uh, that we would need to have compensatory flood storage. By taking down the former Codair Building, the first half we took down, and taking down this half, that would afford us the opportunity in the future to potentially do some development there. Uh, but I don't, I don't see that happening anytime soon, but you, you are correct. That was a piece of it.
So, we have a motion on the floor to move, uh, item I to the Finance Committee? There's a motion on the floor. Vote? Roll call vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
No.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Watzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to one. One absent.
Uh, next item that needs to be voted upon this evening is to approve the following, uh, votes regarding tax classification. We need a vote. The, the motion is to adopt a residential factor of point eight-one-two-eight-four-three for fiscal two thousand eighteen, which translates to a one hundred and seventy-one percent CIP. So moved.
Heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
No.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Watzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to one. One absent.
Motion to grant, to, to not grant a discount for open space. So moved.
Heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Watzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Motion not to adopt a residential exemption? So moved.
Heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Yes.
Garabedian?
Yes.
Gavell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Watzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Motion not to adopt a small commercial exemption.
Heard the motion. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Manning, Martin?
Yeah, I, I, um, was hoping to discuss it. We do not have one. Does anyone recall if we've ever had one, and what's the rationale that we don't offer one? Here she is.
So, to my knowledge, the City of PBD has never adopted a small commercial exemption. I believe there are fourteen towns in the state that have, um, cities and towns. And what the small commercial exemption does, it could, for those properties that are under a million dollars in value and employ less than ten people, they could be entitled up to a ten percent reduction in their average value. Adopting it would increase the commercial and industrial tax rate. As to how many properties could potentially qualify, we haven't done any analysis on that.
I just think it's interesting that might be something that we, um, wanna explore, whether we decide yea or nay. Um, I just think it's something that, um, some, like you said, some other cities and towns have, but it's kind of a, for very small businesses. It gives them, um, a little break, um, that it might be helpful in, especially with our businesses in the downtown area. I think that many of them may fall into that, um, criteria, and it might be helpful to them to create some jobs and to attract them to the downtown area. So, I, just for, uh, future reference, maybe we can refer that matter in, if I may, uh, in the form of, do we have a motion on the floor now? We do, right? Okay, I'll follow up with a motion to refer that to, um, Finance, to, to review that next year. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Manning, Martin?
Present.
Garabedian? Gar- Gavell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Watzulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, one voting present.
Counselor Manning, did you want to make-
Yes, if I could, um, I'd like to move that we, uh, refer to Finance Committee, the exploration of offering small commercial exemption to small businesses. So moved.
Further motion, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? To vote. Counselors, we have a couple more items on the agenda. Please do not leave before making sure that you sign the, uh, the form before you leave tonight, the tax classification form. We're now on, uh, item eight J. Uh, motion to receive.
Move to receive and, uh, refer to Finance.
Uh, golf or Finance would that be?
Um, since we have the Finance Committee next week, and, uh, Counsel Sinewitz, it'd be his last meeting, um, and it was his motion, I'd like to refer it to Finance.
Heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? To vote?
And, point of order, Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, Counsel Sinewitz had a very important, uh, planning board meeting with a project in his ward, so that's why he's not here tonight. Uh, we should've mentioned that earlier, but, um, I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item eight K.
Move to receive instead of a public hearing.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? To vote?
Mr. President, um, could somebody notify, uh, this would probably be, uh, Mark O'Neill's first public hearing, now, uh, Lake Street? Or is that?
That will be scheduled for next, for actually next week.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Counselors, just a point of information, uh, next week for the agenda, we will be starting at seven o'clock for all continued public hearings that have already been open, and then after we, uh, finish the ones that were, uh, continued, we'll then be removing to the new public hearing. So, once again, if you could, uh, make an attempt to be at seven o'clock for all the, uh, public hearings that were just, uh, continued. Appreciate that.